This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August the 15th, 2017. This meeting is now called to order. We will have the invocation by Commissioner Tim Carpenter and the Pledge of Allegiance by Nancy Murray. Would everyone please stand as able?
Let us pray. Oh Father God, as we're before you this evening in the beauty of the evening on the sunlit day that you've given us, we give you thanks for all that you've given us, including the city that we call home. We give you thanks for the leaders of the city. We give you thanks for all of the blessings that come from just living in our town. Please be with each of the commissioners tonight as we make decisions on leading our city forward. We'll give you all the praise and the honor and the glory, for in your name we pray. Amen.
Join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, come unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to welcome all of our guests this evening. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the July 18 Planning and Zoning minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes as presented, Commissioners? No corrections suggested? We'll make a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Have a motion and a second? Do we have those names? All right, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no consent agenda tonight, so we'll move forward with the regular agenda, but first I need to apprise you of the procedures that we will follow. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the Board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The Board also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be: The public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First, the applicant; second, staff; and third, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the request. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the Board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the Board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on September 14, 2017. Thank you. Our first item, regular agenda item A, will be read to us by the City staff.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S-1704 filed by Liberty Baptist Church of Longview, Texas requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in General Retail zoning district for approximately 1.882 acres of Lot 2, Block 1, Liberty Baptist Church addition located at 1500 West Loop 281.
Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone. Introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
My name is Travis Crafton. Work for Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. Address 1201 West Loop 281, Longview, Texas.
Tell us about your project, please.
Our project is located off of West Loop 281 near the Toyota dealership, also near Liberty Baptist Church, as mentioned earlier. The church is positioned near the hatch area, right there where the cursors at. Toyota dealership is to the northeast. And our project would include demolition of a couple of buildings, and we would leave the existing driveway in place off of Loop 281 right there and extend into this property where we would have a restaurant with adequate parking and, as mentioned earlier, a drive-through at the back of the building. We do plan on leaving a buffer area where you see the wooded area at the southeast corner of this track. Kind of tough to see through there, but you can kind of see the trees. Using that for, once again, a buffer yard drainage if needed. We haven't got that far into the study yet, but there is an adequate drainage that flows to the southwest into Gilmer Creek. So that's basically the project. I don't know how much more detail you'd like.
Okay. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions of Travis at this point? No? No questions? Thank you. Now, staff.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in General Retail zoning district located at 1500 West Loop 281. As you can see in our zoning maps, the majority of this property is zoned light commercial with a little bit of heavy commercial and a little bit of general retail. A restaurant with a drive-through window is allowed in light commercial and heavy commercial. However, in general retail, it does require a specific use permit. According to the applicant, 100-foot drainage easement will be dedicated along the rear lot, which is adjacent to the residential neighborhood to the rear Wildwood. The applicant has agreed to maintain a 50-foot natural buffer that will be undisturbed along with an eight-foot tall solid wood fence along the property line. Within the 100-foot easement along the rear, there will be no buildings, parking, or lighting to be allowed in that 100-foot easement. Through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview codes. West Loop 281 is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request with the stipulations that an eight-foot tall solid wood fence be placed along the property line. They maintain a 100-foot easement along the rear of the property with no buildings, parking, or lighting being allowed within that 100-foot easement, and maintain a 50-foot natural buffer to the rear of the property that is adjacent to the residential subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yes, Angela, by natural buffer, are you talking about they get to leave the trees that are there?
Within the 50-foot buffer, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are they required to leave the trees?
They are not required. This is a stipulation of the SUP. I mean, they are required by this request, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're zone commercially. Just let me reiterate, as I see this drawing up here from GR, and then I see the red, the little grid is the aerial that's considered. We're having to do this over this little small sliver of land?
Yes, sir. It's that little sliver that's gridded, that is zone general retail, that requires the specific use permit. In the red, if they were wholly in the red, they would not be required to go through this public hearing. Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would be no question, we wouldn't even have this over these kind of ...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff?
So they're going to raise all the buildings?
I believe so. That may be a question for Travis, but I believe on looking at this aerial, at least this one building, it looks like they are going to demolish, from what I've been told by the developer.
So the building that's out of the grid is not going to go?
That is not part of this request. That is not part of the property they're purchasing.
Will there be a fence required to go up that side there?
No, sir. It's zone general retail, so.
It'll have its own stipulations.
Is that all Liberty property now?
Yes, sir.
And Liberty is still in existence?
I don't ... Travis, you might want to answer that one. I'm not sure.
They are. They're looking to relocate. I believe they already found a place, so I'm not sure if they're gone just yet, but they are looking for another property.
There's no Liberty signs over there whatsoever.
Then they must have already relocated them.
Name changed.
It's there. It's on the signage. I thought it was ... Yeah, the signage's there. I thought it was still active use.
No, it says something else. Doesn't say Liberty.
Okay.
It's still a place of worship.
Sovereign life.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But there is a pole sign.
I think they never changed that.
Oh, sovereign life, okay.
That's why I asked if Liberty was still ... Was an entity or what?
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, staff. Now, the general public. This is the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Those that come to the microphone, we'll ask for those in support first. Please give your name and address. Is there anyone here that would like to step to the microphone in support of this agenda Seeing none, then I will ask for any that are in opposition of this agenda item. Please come to the microphone one at a time. Give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa Peavey. I'm also, I live in Wildwood, but I'm also the manager of the Wildwood HOA, and I feel like we could be supportive of this if some of our questions were answered. We would like as big a buffer as we can squeeze out. If you can squeeze out 60 feet, 60 is better than 50. And also, the fence, instead of just butting it up against the existing six-foot privacy fences that the residences have, could you put this wooden fence at the end of your buffer so that we have ... That's going to be an extra layer of protection of sound and noise and whatnot. And also, can we make this binding that they can't, like in five or 10 years, come and cut all the trees down, remove the fence, and put in parking lights and whatever, you know, in a few years? And then my other concern is that the volume of the place where you order your food, can that be set at such a volume that people can't hear it from their houses? And that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Peavey. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Higgin. I live at 1309 Tiffany. I'm not opposed to this project, however, I feel like a 50-foot buffer just isn't enough. I mean, behind my fence, there is a, and the homeowner's fences, is an electrical line, so under that electrical line, there's no vegetation or anything. Well, from my fence to the nearest tree is probably about 10 yards. 50 feet's about 16 to 17 yards, so there's not going to be much trees buffering our property. You know, there's going to be a talk box on the back of the restaurant. We're going to hear noise from that. There's going to be some lighting issues probably. And, you know, I feel like, you know, with those issues, you know, that may decrease our property value. What I would suggest is a 100-foot buffer along with an eight-foot fence along the back of their usable property. You know, I feel like with this, it would eliminate a lot of the noise from the talk box and, you know, also eliminate the lighting issues and maybe keep our property values the same. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Mr. Higgin, thank you.
I'm going to have my cheat sheet. I apologize beforehand. I am Linda Bell, and I have a Longview resident all my life. I've lived at 1311 Tiffany Lane for 38 years, and I do understand that something's going to be built behind our property. We are not against that. We're not opposed to that, but we do have concerns that our property value will decrease, concerns with lighting. We're also concerned about the drive-through talk box noise, the traffic noise from the cars, dumpster noise, and rotten fly increase problems. Its proposal, as it's stated now, is a 50-foot natural barrier and has an eight-foot fence, and we appreciate that. I was a resident whenever Toyota came in, and they promised lots of things, but it didn't transfer over to all the things that we were supposed to receive. We, and weekly is an example, every week, twice a week, we hear the dumpster noise, and I live two blocks from the dumpster on the back of Toyota. The speaker and the natural barrier issues are going to affect our homes. Promises were made during this proposal, but they weren't followed through on the building of the property. And, just one second, I've lost my place. Of course, a restaurant is going to also increase the traffic on the loop and the turnaround, and I've checked the Brahms website, and the hours are from 6:00 AM to 10:45 at night. So the lights, the drive-through talk box, the traffic noise will affect us. A 50-foot barrier is not enough. A wooden fence, we appreciate, but the trees, I would have very few trees behind my house at 50 feet. You can see the 10-foot easement, there's nothing there, and I think the closest, the closest big tree is probably at least 30 feet. So I do appreciate your consideration. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell.
My name's Stephen Bell, 1311 Tiffany. This will be just about in the back of our house. What I'm asking for is, I think it was stated, there's going to be a 50-yard natural barrier, I mean, a 50-foot natural barrier, and another 50-foot of non-use area. In the non-use area, could the trees be kept up instead of cut? Also, the eight-foot fence is a great idea, and I believe you stated, the planner stated that there weren't going to be any fences on the sides. If the 50 or basically the 100-foot barrier area would just have that fence to the sides, it would keep the lights from going into the houses to the, you know, the sides of the property. One other concern is the runoff and drainage. That goes into the creek, which feeds the lake at Wildwood. So I think there needs to be an effort made to keep that clean, to keep dirt, trash, grease out of that runoff, so it won't filter into the lake in Wildwood. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Do we have any other spokespeople? Yes, sir.
I'm Kim Williamson, and I have a residence at 1317 Tiffany Lane. I think I'm in agreement with what my fellow neighbors have said. It makes sense if we're going to have 100 feet that's not to be utilized, to put that fence out there at that 100-foot mark, which would give us additional buffer zone. I think if we could do that, it would benefit our whole neighborhood. You know, we've had a long period of time in which we've had a very good neighbor in the church, and I'm not so sure that restaurants make the best of neighbors, primarily not because of the restaurant, but because of citizens, you know, trash. People are quick to throw stuff out, and at least we keep that trash 100 foot away from us, because the fence can also be a barrier for trash getting back into that natural buffer area. So we would ask, I think from what I'm hearing here, we would ask that the trees not be destroyed from that 100-foot spot back, and that the fence be located at the 100-foot area. Other than that, I really, unlike many here, I'm not really against this. I just want to have a little more protection. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Williamson. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other spokespeople tonight? If not, the public hearing is closed. We have questions from the Commissioners. Comments, questions?
On some of the issues that they, that they're speaking about, with some of the trees going from 50 to 100 feet, what would be the process of, would that be with the developer or ...
I, I mean, we could make it a stipulation. I know I've talked to the applicant a little bit about it, and their concern is as far as drainage, not knowing how much area they're going to be required for drainage, you know, because that is going to be part of a, that 100 foot is going to be part of a drainage easement. So that is, that was a concern that they had stated to staff, and so.
That drainage easement goes west of there, right?
Well, I mean, as far as this side is concerned, staff is talking about the 100 foot from the back of their property to the property line would be maintain a no-build zone slash drainage easement. Now, the back 50% would be that natural buffer between the back property line back towards their property.
Does the Toyota water come down?
You know, I'm not sure. I don't, yeah.
Water goes from east to west.
Yeah. So they're saying from east to west, so from the Toyota dealership down.
Comments, thoughts?
Angela?
Yes, sir.
On the majority of that, 80-something percent of it's already zone commercial C1, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What other than a restaurant could actually come in there?
Well, originally, it was rezoned for a pawn shop, so a pawn shop could go within that light commercial zoning designation. I mean, a restaurant could go there by right as is without a drive-through window. Quite a few uses, automotive uses, I mean, you could have a, an auto repair shop could go in there by right in that light commercial zoning district. There are some pretty intense uses that could go in light commercial. Yes, sir.
Are we ready to call for a motion? No more questions?
Do you see any issues with putting that fence at the 100-foot line?
I think the only concern that staff had, and I mean, you know, this is just a concern we had, was that putting it at that 100-foot would create kind of a void, an area where you could have, you know, criminal activity, and although a fence may stop some of the trash, some of the trash may blow over the fence, and then when you're not thinking about it, most people think, oh, well, out of sight, out of mind. They might not think, Brahms may not think, even though they own the property, to go back there and make sure that it's clean as well. If you put that fence there, you've got a fence and a fence, and just, you know, it creates kind of a void area. And so that was the only concern with staff, was just, you know, worrying about criminal activity being between those two fences. That's why we made the recommendation, put it at the property line.
Where does the wood area stop that maybe you feel covered with? Is it with the 50 feet or is it 75 or ...
I mean, if you're comfortable with putting it at, you know, the 100-foot, then it was just, you know, that was one of our concerns, was, you know, you create between two fences, there's, there's area.
Correct.
Hidden area.
With eight-foot fence, Charles Prender and 100-foot of easement, some of this easement area, go back to the 100-foot, until you get the site plan finished, I correct. I mean, there's an attempt to keep the trees, but you are going to have to have some drainage issues there, but it is a huge swath. It's still a large amount of trees. That's still a very nice buffer that we all seem to like and want.
Yes, sir.
At 50-foot, that's still very large.
Yes, sir.
And a fence. And over the years, we would have loved seeing that from many other applicants, to offer us trees.
That is correct.
Instead of taking them down, they're offering to keep the trees.
Do we have the footprint of their property?
Yes, sir. It's very hard to see, I'm sorry, on the projector. I know you'll have it in your packets as well.
What's this? It's right here. It's on the back of this.
Angela, is there a specific code within that zone, what, how much light decimals or whatever that might term, that there might be for that?
There's actually not, but it actually, you know, our zoning ordinance just says is if it impacts the adjacent neighbors, then they've got to resolve the issue. So I mean, if there is lighting impact, you know, with this project, then, you know, we would contact Brahms and tell them, you know, we try to work it in through the site plan review process, but if there are issues, then, you know, we will contact Brahms. I know in the past, there have been lighting issues with Toyota, and I'm pretty sure planning staff has gone out there to talk to the Toyota dealership on multiple occasions.
But we didn't see that. Never we have to use the 100-foot.
Angela, can you show me where that line, if the natural buffer was left, you know, looking at this, at this footprint? Where would that line?
It's hard to see, because this isn't really, it's not fully to scale, but this is about from the back of here to the back property line is approximately 120 feet. So about, it's hard to see, but the natural buffer
Yes, that's what it says.
would be about 50, I mean, it's 50 feet. So from the back, from this line right here, this back line right here, back to their property line is 120, approximately 120 feet.
To the nearest resident?
Yeah, to the property line.
Of the nearest resident.
The existing fence that's already there.
Yes.
That's where.
Yes. Let me see these aerials.
The 50-foot natural buffer is within the 100 feet?
Yes, sir.
That's what I.
And could be 100 feet. Right?
And the height of the fence is six feet?
Eight.
Eight feet?
It says on that map that we've been looking at, six feet, but it's actually eight. That's what's confusing.
Yeah.
That is incorrect.
Yeah.
No, the requirement's six foot, but they're doing that eight foot.
Eight foot, correct.
Yeah, we're requesting eight foot.
Thank you for that clarification.
I would move for approval. Second.
I'd like to update your motion to include that it requires staff's recommendation in the stipulations.
It's in there if it's on this one, right?
I think, just to clarify.
It's probably safer to go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, you made a motion for approval. That's approval.
Based on the revised.
Yeah, you need to make sure that you state the condition as part of that motion.
Or I can amend the motion. Which do you prefer?
I think since he made it, we need him to amend it.
Yeah.
Do you want it to read as it reads, or is, with the word "is revised"? The motion for approval is to accept application S-1704 as revised on August the 15th, 2017. According to the applicant, a 100-foot drainage easement will be dedicated along the rear of the lot, which is adjacent to the residential neighborhood. The applicant has agreed to maintain a 50-foot natural buffer that will be undisturbed along an eight-foot tall wooden fence to be installed along the property line. Within the 100-foot easement area to the rear of the property, no buildings, parking, or lighting will be allowed. The developer will try to preserve as many trees as possible within this 100-foot easement. Through the development process, the developer will meet all Longview City codes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor, please show your right hand. Those opposed, like sign. The motion passes. Thank you all for your participation, and now we'll move to regular agenda item B.
A public hearing will be held to consider ... Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-1706 filed by Leslie and Leroy Elmore Jr. to rezone approximately 1.86 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain Survey, Track 21, Section 1, from agricultural to office zoning district located on the east side of McCann Road and north of Technology Center at 4414 McCann Road.
Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant here to speak? Thank you. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I'm Leslie Elmore. I reside at SG 37C Lake Cherokee. I'm requesting the rezoning of 4414 McCann Road to coincide with the surrounding property for future development.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Elmore? If not, thank you, sir. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural, seen here in the green, to office zoning district. The portion, this portion of McCann Road is designated as a collector, which is appropriate for this type of use as long as access management is followed. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Let's ride away off McCann. I mean, I don't know what size this property is, but I drive that road. It's pretty skinny.
I'm not sure.
No shoulders. I'm just looking. I just wondered, for his sake. That road's got to grow on these days and be improved.
What's the width on that? The narrow end of that one. The width is...
The width of the lot, it's about 132 feet on the short side, and then it appears to be 217 feet on the wide side.
I see that. Thank you.
I think it is because it is a collector.
All right. That's staff's recommend, staff's comments. Now we'll ask for the public hearing of the general public. Are there any guests that are, want to speak in support of this agenda item? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of this agenda item. There are none? Do we have additional questions, comments from the commissioners? If not...
We have a motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Now, staff will give us an update.
All items at the last council meeting were approved by City Council.
Thank you. Any citizen comments, commissioners' comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.